Yes, very much so. Yeah, you know when she's in the room. Now that Commissioner Lowe is returning, we'll get this meeting started, nine AM. Notice that the meeting was properly posted July twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, for purposes of this agenda, action means any of the following amended, approving as amended, deferred, denying, giving instructions to staff, making a recommendation to another public body, receiving documents or presentations referring to committee reconsidering reopening, returning, or striking item. This month, the prayer and pledge uh is done by Mr. Lowe's office.
Yes, thank you Chairman. Uh, we have with us today Reverend Kelly Booker. Uh, would you please approach? Uh, a little bit about Reverend Booker. He was installed at the age of twenty-three years old as the eleventh senior pastor of Union Baptist Church. He has rendered faithful and visionary leadership to the church and the community. Thank you Pastor Booker. Would you please lead us in prayer?
Eternal God, I thank you for your presence. For you said always that you're everywhere at the same time. As we stand here, Lord, as leaders, stewards of what you have entrusted us with, help us to do it. Courage and the spirit of equality. Bless now all that we do today and each commissioner in Jesus' name. Amen. Before we do our pledge, let me just mention quickly that our prayers and our condolences go to Mr. Cleo, who served uh here for over, or his age was eighty-seven, I believe. Let us keep him in mind as we do our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individually, liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you Pastor. Just uh real quick, we're gonna go to straighten some issues out here. We're gonna hop straight to eighteen commissioners in front of you. You will see a notice of the Oklahoma County twenty-twenty-six holiday schedule. You will see Juneteenth, Friday, June nineteenth has been added to this. This is my amendment. And I will make a motion. I don't have anybody to speak. I don't have anybody signed up to speak on this issue, so I'll make a a motion to uh enter this into the record. I've already given one to the clerk. If you're in agreement with that, well um, does anybody wanna, what? This is the amendment. I'm submitting this into the record right now. Would you like a copy? Here's a copy of last year's. So as you'll notice on the screen, there's only four present. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven different holidays that are represented. That's just a screen issue. Uh, the ones that'll be on record with the clerk will show Juneteenth. Uh, if there's not any other questions, anybody else? Any comments?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That holiday is approved. Now we can skip to item seventeen. Uh, Commissioner, this is your item about Mr. Cleo.
Yeah, so we've lost our good friend and uh everybody's friend here at the courthouse, Mr. Cleo Fields. And I'm honored to have his family here with us today and thank you for coming. This is just a small contingency of his family, however, because they will be here in force on Monday when we have the first ever lying in state. Uh, and this resolution will be read there, but I'll go ahead for the record and read it today as since they are here to receive it. A resolution honoring the life and legacy of Cleophas Cleo Fields. Whereas Mr. Fields was born in Idabel, Oklahoma in nineteen thirty-eight and has lived and worked in Oklahoma County for most of his life. Whereas Mr. Fields, a nineteen fifty-six graduate of Douglas High School. And whereas Mr. Fields has been blessed with eight children, more than a dozen grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And whereas Mr. Fields served two years in the United States Army and nine years in the Oklahoma National Guard. Whereas Mr. Fields spent more than two decades cooking and working in hotel restaurants throughout Oklahoma City. And whereas Mr. Fields was a successful restaurant owner and operator for fifteen years with restaurants in Oklahoma and Texas. Whereas Mr. Fields has spent over twenty-eight years serving the Oklahoma City community by providing professional shoe shine services. He was a blessing to everybody who passed his stand. Although Cleo was a man of few words, he will always be known for his generous spirit, enormous smile, and kind heart. Whereas Mr. Fields received several awards throughout his life, including the Liberty Bell Award in twenty-nineteen, which is a prestigious recognition presented to non-lawyers who have contributed to strengthening the American system of justice. And whereas Mr. Fields leaves behind a rich legacy of love, service, and community building, his life will continue to inspire generations to come. And now therefore be it resolved that Cleophas Cleo Fields is remembered as a beloved community leader, a trailblazer, and as declared by the county commissioners in twenty-twenty-three, an official courthouse legend. And be it further resolved in remembrance of his legacy of friendship, love, and compassion, the Board of Oklahoma County Commissioners does hereby order that Cleo Fields will become the first person in history to lie in state within the Oklahoma County Courthouse the highest honor the county can bestow. Approve this day, and I will move the item.
There is a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you Commissioners. It's a sad, sad day. Anything?
We we have his family here. I don't know if they want to say anything, and then I'm sure we'll take a picture with the resolution. Shereen.
I'd just like to say thank you all. Um, Daddy would be so proud. And we appreciate, appreciate all that you all are doing. Um, this would mean a lot to him. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would like to add, you know, your dad was a great man. Uh, you know, it was just a pleasure seeing him every day. I was a young attorney twenty-something years ago. Uh, he helped me. And you know, I I remember uh when I got elected, he told me he was proud of me. And I'll always remember that statement. And uh, you know, my condolences are to you and your family.
Thank you for sharing him with us. We really appreciate that. I know that Commissioner Mon and I have been down here for a while, we'll say. And every day, his, no matter how bad the day was, he was always there with a kind word, uplifting spirit, pat you on the back, dust you off, and say, get back in the game, which was great. Loved the guy.
And the for the arrangements with the funeral home, the lying in state ceremony, the arrival ceremony will be at ten AM on Monday. We have a commission meeting at nine, so I'm sure we'll be done by then and and we'll be there in place. The public is invited, and it'll be a brief ceremony though, because there is a lot to go on. But I believe most of the courts intend to pause their court dockets in recognition and come down there. But because of that, it it needs to be brief, but he will continue to lie in state until four PM where there is a departure ceremony. Public's invited to both, and the funeral services will be the following day, eleven, at the Life Church on one hundred and seventy-eighth and North Pennsylvania. Public's also invited, and there is a viewing at Temple and Sons from two to two to seven PM on Sunday. So several ways to honor and remember him, but because the ceremony on uh Monday is just for official, I know there were a number that showed up here today, um, including Pastor Scobie and others that wanted to do it in salute and memory of Cleo. If there's any that would like to speak or offer some condolences or tributes, now would be the time. If you want.
I think he looked at me as to say, Commissioner Lowe to get up. I met Mr. Cleo, um, I believe it was probably about seven years ago and obviously such a kind, uh, a gentle soul. And um, I loved the way I believe it was Commissioner Davis and said that he was more in essence than a shoe shine man, but he was shining spirits or or souls. And I know it's been a many of low day, low point that I have come into the Oklahoma County Courthouse, and he certainly encouraged me. He dusted me off and said, go and get in that courtroom and deal with what you have to deal with. Some know what I'm talking about. I remember when I, he told me he went to Douglas High School, which my alma mater as well, I mentioned to him, my uncle, Andy D. Menz, uh, Junior, and he looked at me and he said, I knew your grandfather also. And if any of you know, when your granddaddy's been gone a long time and someone knows him, it just touches your heart. So thank you so much for your daddy, um, who was certainly my friend. He came and worshiped at the Ebenezer Baptist Church with me one day when I asked him to, and he will forever be in my heart. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor. Anybody else?
Wanna get a photo with the family?
Photo would be great. That's a great thing you're doing for Cleo, Commissioner. I appreciate that. Bear with me. I know we're jumping around a little bit today. We also have several people signed up for item number twenty-five. The first one I got is, it looks like Mick. Is there a Mick? Ferguson, maybe? Okay. Is that, was that right? Mick Ferguson? Okay.
Okay, uh, good morning. My name is Mick Ferguson and I live at eighty-two hundred Northwest Hundred and Seventy-Eighth Street in the house that stood for over a century in our neighborhood. Many still refer to it as the Harper House, after the family that called it home for decades. Today, most people, especially the kids in the neighborhood and the passerbuyers call it the treehouse house. Because we built a big, beautiful treehouse and a century-old walnut tree that stands proudly in our backyard. We're not just homeowners, we're caretakers of history. We have moved here to protect a home that holds generations of stories, laughter, and resilience. And part of that resilience comes from something that doesn't get talked about enough, the land itself. The property across from ours, where the zoning change is being proposed, sits on what FEMA designates a regulatory floodway. For more than a hundred years, our home has stood strong, never once damaged by flood, precisely because this area has remained undeveloped and able to breathe and absorb water, nature. I'm trying to speed this up because I know there's a lot. Um, bottom line is, we love our property. We love being in a rural residential area. We moved from Dallas-Fort Worth where we could touch our neighbor on each side, and um, we love it there. We have four kids. My son, he was not able to be here today. We call him Huck Finn because he's out there in shoes, no shoes, shorts, running barefoot, playing. Um, and having a commercial property right beside us in a floodplain is concerning. You know, we have a uh standard, you know, operating procedure for our family. When it rains, we stay inside. And so um, I could go more in depth, but I won't. I just ask you to hear our hearts, hear our voices, and um, vote no to the zoning change. God bless.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming down. Looks like we have the entire Ferguson family. Stephanie Ferguson? Caroline, you're on deck. Oh, well, y'all can come up together.
Okay. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Um, my name is Stephanie Ferguson and I live directly uh next to the property proposed for rezoning. Um, I'm here today not as a, not just as a homeowner, but as another of four uh children who made a very intentional choice about where to raise their family. Uh, like my husband said, we moved here from the Dallas-Fort Worth area and we were searching for peace, space, and a way of life that allowed our kids to grow up outdoors, exploring, playing, learning, and using their imaginations. And we don't allow gaming systems in our home. Instead, our children spend their time riding dirt bikes, four-wheelers, playing in their amazing treehouse, fishing, uh, being fully engaged with the land around them. And that's what this home and our two zoning made possible for us. Um, we've, we've really loved it here. Um, I'm a Texan through and through, and um, Oklahoma's been really kind and has blessed us uh in our family. Um, so you know, we, the proposed rezoning would change all of that. Um, allowing commercial development next door would bring noise lights, traffic, unfamiliar people into an area that is currently safe, quiet, and residential. It would rob my children of the freedom and security uh they currently have to to roam, play, and grow in the outdoors. I fear I would no longer feel comfortable letting them play outside, and that loss has been measurable to me as a mother. Um, a commercial development would be inconsistent with the surrounding area and would fundamentally change the character of our neighborhood. Uh, I urge y'all to think beyond land use classifications and planning documents. Please consider the real, very real personal impact this decision would have on my family, my children, and so many others who call this community home. Denying this rezoning request means preserving the lifestyle we worked so hard to build, one that prioritizes safety, family values, and outdoors. Please vote no on this rezoning request. Protect what makes our family, our neighborhood special, not just for me, but for all the families who have moved here with the same hopes as we've had. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Caroline, your time to shine.
Hello, my name is Caroline Ferguson. I'm fourteen years old. I live on the corner of one seventy-eighth in Council. My biggest concern with rezoning from R-two to commercial is um, safety. How many of y'all have a daughter? Okay. How many of y'all would do anything to keep her safe? Human Trafficking Hotline dot org reported two hundred and ten victims of trafficking in Oklahoma in twenty-twenty-four. Eighty-two of those people were a victim of sex trafficking. I'm the oldest of four, and it concerns me not only that I am a woman, but I have younger siblings that could just as easily be taken. Last year, Isabel Brown, a forty-three-year-old woman, was held at gunpoint and kidnapped at Coffee Jerks on one seventy-eighth and North MacArthur. This is about one mile away from my house. This occurred in broad daylight in a commercial strip center like the one Mr. Kim would be putting right next door to my home. I don't want to have to live in constant fear of my safety, so please prayerfully consider my request and the request of the community to deny the rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Thanks for coming down. Next is Erin McCarlin and Renee Truitt.
Hi, good morning. I'm Renee. This is Erin McCarlin, not McCarlin. We live about a um, mile down one seventy-eighth in Rockwell, um, from the Ferguson's. We bought our house eleven years ago. Um, we're in the middle of Deer Creek. We moved intentionally out of the city so that we could get away from the hustle and bustle and have land for our three children that live at home with us um, to play just like the Ferguson's do as well. And they go to Deer Creek Schools. We are a very close rural community. There is nothing commercialized besides the Deer Creek Schools that is built um from one sixty-fourth going north. We are at one seventy-eighth. So by starting a commercial, commercialized um development, I am afraid that that's gonna open up the possibility to more commercialized developments in that area. And we are very strongly trying to protect what we have right now, which is land and peace and not pollution and commute. We purposely made the decision to drive um twenty minutes to the grocery store, to a gas station, to church, um, because we're okay with that. At the end of the day, we get to come home to peace and not commercial and not public and in our own little world. This project is a horrible idea. Um, as far as law enforcement goes, Oklahoma County is in charge of Deer Creek. Oklahoma County, we're in a very unincorporated area of Deer Creek, and Oklahoma County is stretched thin as it is. So um, we have about two deputies, I believe, at during day and two deputies, I believe during the evening that pretty much take care of calls that are needed out in that area. If we start adding commercialized um businesses out there, we're going to be less law enforcement, which is going to increase danger to our residents who need service calls if they're being attentive somewhere else. Um, Oklahoma City sometimes will back that up, but as of right now, we're not getting nearly the law enforcement that we need. Um, so I think that's a horrible idea. The Ferguson's mentioned the flood, flood plain. Um, a couple of years ago, on that same exact intersection where that proposed development is taking place, there was a woman who was swept away in her vehicle and drowned do during, due to flood. There is no way to, I, we sat at the last meeting and heard all of the arguments um that this would be okay to build right there. It's, it's just not, it's, it's not okay. It's dangerous. It's dangerous to, they want a daycare there. They want um a karate facility there. They want children in that immediate area where, when it floods, and we know Oklahoma, we have horrible storms here. Flooding can happen, occur in thirty minutes. That's a terrible idea to have a ton of children in a daycare facility locked inside in a, in a flood zone. I think that's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, is it your intention to approve this?
No.
If not, we might could save everybody their time if you want to go ahead and reject it.
If I recall correctly, the planning commission denied this, correct? Yeah, so my, my intent is just to accept the recommendation of planning commission. Is everybody fine with that? Did you use, anybody wanna still speak? Does anybody to speak against any of that? Mister Kim, come on down.
How do you do?
What would you, I just
I'm not used to this type of environment.
State, will you state your name?
My name is Thomas Logston. Professional engineer. And I live at uh, one hundred and seventy, sixty-seven fifty-five Northwest Hundred and Seventy-Six, which is a mile up the road from this site. The uh, we know that the board has recommended denial of this petition. We, there were several items that were presented at the previous meeting that we were not able to address, so I'm gonna try to address them here. Some of them you've already heard just this morning. And I want to thank you for the opportunity for this final chance to, to uh implement this project. This has been a long-term dream of Master Kim for twenty-eight years. He bought this property with the intent of developing it. And it's what you tell this time when the conditions were right to develop the property. And the during the committee meeting, the planning commission meeting, it was stated that there was extreme interest. There was a petition that was uh presented with, said fifty. Turns out it had forty-five names signed on it. And it's important that we, we think it's important to note that that petition said that it was the people that were in the neighborhood close by. So I've analyzed the petition. And thirteen of the people that signed the petition don't even live in Oklahoma County. And one, one signee didn't give an address, so we couldn't determine where, where he was from. Several entities lived in the, several of the signees lived in, in one housing addition. So we would have four family members sign representing one property. There, there were four people that signed the petition that lived within the thousand feet required by the regulation that people be notified. All the rest of them were outside of the area of influence. Many of us, as far as twenty miles away, of course, those were outside the county. A lot of them were, were several miles up the road or away from it. We paid the, the state Texas Assessor to provide a list of the people. There were fifteen to seventeen people on the list that had to be notified to look at this, this item. Yeah. Of those, only four people responded or were, have responded to this. So that means there's another ten or so that either are in favor or are not objecting to it, that live within the thousand feet. I'd like to show you a, a picture, if they can bring it up, of the plot. I thought it was gonna be up here. Basically, the I've got it right here in my hand. Oh.
Did you hand this out to everybody?
What was the vote on the planning commission, Eric? Do you recall? Okay.
Okay.
Bas- basically the plan, oh, you got it in there in front of you? Okay. Basically, if you look at the plan, it's a three-building complex. It's not a strip mall, as many people have stated in their testimony and in the petitions. It's gonna be a, a low-impact office slash maybe retail. And it's con, it's comprised of three buildings that are set in an office complex-type situation. They're placed on the extreme southeast corner of the lot, so that they're away from the neighborhoods. Then we will have the, the parking lot, and then there's a green area on the north side, which will have a landscaping place to buffer the, the facility from the neighboring, from the neighborhood. The area that's shown as a, a soccer field is really a multi-use field, and, and it is there to retain water whenever a flood occurs. It will be a, a ponding area, if you will, and then the water can be released at a controlled rate so that any floodwaters will be controlled and it will alleviate both upstream and downstream conditions of flooding. We've had a Hexres study that I'm gonna introduce Mister Bill Smith to cover the Hexres study that shows what effect the, this, this construction will have on the environment. We uh
Mister Logston, your, your time's been expired. We gave you a little bit, but I appreciate you coming down. Is there anybody else to speak in favor?
Yes, I'd like Mister Bill.
Okay, Mister Bill Smith? Perfect. Thanks, sir.
My name is Bill Smith, two eight five oh eight West Forty-first Street South, Manford, Oklahoma. I'm a professional hydrologist for fifty-one years in the state of Oklahoma. Uh, Mr. Kim prudently had me do an evaluation of this site prior to the zoning. Normally, the floodplain development doesn't come up during a zoning issue. And, but we, I did do it and there is a physical solution to have no rise in the current base flood elevation or the floodway elevation for either Deer Creek or Soldier Creek. That's what that is. What happens is after, normally after a zoning change, then, as Eric pointed out in the Planning Commission meeting, then a, the design plans are done, a FEMA conditional letter of map provision is submitted, it's constructed, and then a letter of map provision. That's about a five to six-year process. So the floodplain development issue is really separate and apart from a zoning issue. You usually do the zoning first and then you do the rest of it. And that's a second set of approvals that would be necessary from the county to proceed forward. So this is a, from a floodplain development permit, uh, perspective, getting, you can acknowledge that it's in the floodplain and floodway, but to negate the, the zoning determination, it really is a later process that has to be taken care of. But there is a solution that I have that we would submit to Eric as a floodplain adminis- excuse me, as a floodplain administrator. If the zoning is approved and then it has to go to FEMA and then it can be constructed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was this given to the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Yeah, in fact, they had a floodplain management board meeting directly after, is that correct?
Not, not for that.
Not for that one, okay. All right, we've heard explanations. The other two were protest. Do you guys? Is it all right if we go ahead or? Okay. So I'll make the motion to accept the recommendations of the Planning Commission. There's motion in a second. Call those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That will bring us to Sharon, hold on tight. Item number one, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve minutes? There is motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Item number two is blanket. Any changes to the blanket? Hold on. There we go. Oh, there she is. No changes. Thanks, sir. Motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number three is claims. Is there a motion to approve claims?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, items four through eleven are consent. Is there a motion to approve consent?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number twelve, Mr. Lowe.
Yes. Morning Commissioners. Item number twelve is a specific assistance between Millwood Public School District and the BOCC, uh, for a walkway extension. I'll ask for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number thirteen?
Yes, sir. Number thirteen is appointing, uh, Mr. Jeffrey D. Farmer to the Oklahoma County Planning Commission as District One's representative.
And, uh, Mr. Farmer, are you present where, when he, he is relieved?
He's here.
Yeah.
Do you have a few words?
He's a man of few words.
I'm more about action than words, but I'm here to help.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item fourteen?
Item fourteen is amending the Lion State Resolution from June, um, just allowing, uh, Cleo to be allowed to Lion State.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion.
And how is it amended specifically? What did you guys decide on?
We had a whereas statement. Um, as it had stated in the, in the resolution originally was all the county elected officials and a county employee. Uh, Mr. Cleo was a vendor, and so we just wanted to make sure that it was allowable for him.
Um, did you get in about the highest honor?
I did, yes, sir. It's the last whereas.
Okay, all right, good. I wanted to be sure that was something I didn't get in on that first, so I second them.
Yeah, there's motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for the clarification. Item number fifteen is with Crooked Oaks.
Yes, sir. This is specific assistance, Crooked Oak, uh, to repair road and sidewalks on school property. Um, donation of labor and equipment.
Glad to see we're seeing it. There's motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Mon, number sixteen?
Uh, this is just a deal with Oklahoma City for a street, uh, to do some drainage and stuff, so I'll make the motion.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number seventeen has been taken care of. Item number eighteen has been taken care of. Item number nineteen, uh, is the assessor. This looks like to approve an agreement with ATM One for credit card processing. Is this just a renewal?
It's a simple contract, standard contract renewal, yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion to renew contract?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number twenty, Mr. Barnes. This looks like an annual agreement between Oklahoma County and Bethany.
Love it.
There's a motion to approve.
Second.
In a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number twenty-one, this is a contract with the Oklahoma State Fire Marshal. The only thing that falls under the purview of the Oklahoma State Fire Marshal for inspection is a jail. And this contract is to give our plans to the State Fire Marshal for approval. There will be a follow-up afterwards once completion, uh, construction is completed. And they will come out and do the onsite inspection, so, uh, expect an amendment following this contract in the future.
Now, I've had a conversation with the State Fire Marshal and I've directed, uh, Stacy to exercise the option sometimes granted by sending a request for reduction of rate.
Yep.
So hopefully we can get this lowered.
You should have gotten a letter from Mr. Barnes and some discussion about that with the State Fire Marshal that thinks that they can come in well under what the, uh, proposed amount was, so. Any questions, Commissioner Low?
My concern is, you know, we've we need money to pay for this jail. So my concern is us spending a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, on something that is not guaranteed to happen. Uh, we don't have a sales tax on the ballot, uh, nothing is moving forward. So I, you know, I have, I really have some reservations about moving forward, spending taxpayers' money, which is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars on something that's possibly not going to happen.
Any further questions or statements?
I would like to add one thing, um, on this agenda item, that if this is approved today, we were able to set them up as a vendor yesterday, so funds have been encumbered.
Excellent.
We have to live forward with the assumption, there's a whole lot of that that has happened so far on this jail. Um, in good faith, I will move the item.
This is also for the Behavioral Healthcare Center, which is currently under construction and it will be necessary to preserve and protect life at that Behavioral Healthcare Center. So I think it's mandatory that we do this to protect those individuals. I will second. Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
HR, this is regarding the July twenty twenty-five BOCC Employees of the Month.
Good morning. We had two employees that were going to be recognized today. However, one of them is not here, uh, today. He will re- be recognized next week. But, um, for today, I'm going to call Jessica Clayton and Brad Hermes.
Okay.
Hello again.
Ma'am.
It is, um, a pleasure and an honor in order to, uh, recognize today Brad Hermes for Employee of the Month. During his extended, uh, during the extended leave, uh, the HR Director Brad has consistently gone above and beyond his responsibilities, demonstrating exceptional leadership, initiative, and dedication. He took it upon himself to identify and address critical year-end responsibilities within the HR Department, including, but not limited to reviewing the budget, contracts, and insurance policies, tasks that fell well outside the usual scope of his role. His proactive approach ensured that these essential processes remained on track and in compliance during a critical interim period. I appreciate Brad's excellent communication skills and thorough fall-through in assisting Oklahoma County's insurance policies. He has provided timely and consistent updates on both HR and safety matters, fostering transparency, communication, and continuity across departments. Brad consistently demonstrates a positive attitude, sharp attention to detail, and a deep understanding of workers' compensation, compliance, and safety protocols. His professionalism and expertise have been invaluable and his commitment to excellence has not gone unnoticed. Brad's willingness to step up, support his colleagues, and lead with integrity makes him an outstanding candidate for this well-deserved recognition.
All right, you've heard the explanation. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Okay.
Do we want to do a picture with our employee of the month?
Yeah.
I'm afraid you might bear, Brad's going to break a camera here.
One only once, today.
Ms. Hannah Whip? This is the question and action for a service agreement between BOCC on behalf of the juvenile real with CRE Oaks Health Services. Is this a renewal?
Uh, it is not. It's a new service, um, agreement with CRE Oaks to provide, um, some of our sexual behavior programs for our kids, so we're excited about the new program.
Okay, that's great. Any questions? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve? There's motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next one looks like something about the truncated rodeo system.
Yes, this one is a standard renewal. Um, we go through the Sheriff's Office Dispatch and they use the Oklahoma City, uh, towers for the radio services. So we also have to have that agreement with them in order to use dispatch.
That's perfect. Is there a motion to approve? There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-five, we've already taken care of. Item number twenty-six, this is the final plat of the Chara. This was approved by Planning Commission unanimously. Is there a motion, or I'll make a motion to approve because it's actually on one early?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioners comments. Commissioner Low?
Yes, I would like to, uh, recognize, um, and I'm, I'm sad to announce. I'm sure a lot of the lawyers in the courtroom are aware of the death of, uh, Martha McMurray. Uh, she was an assistant district attorney, uh, in Oklahoma County for thirty-six years. Uh, she was a phenomenal attorney, uh, one of the most ethical people I've ever met. Uh, just a good person, so I would like to express my condolences to her family and friends.
Okay, Ms. Mon?
No, thank you.
Um, thank you for recognizing Cleo and his family. He really was a, a bright light in this building and it does seem a little bit darker over there now that he's not here, so. Any new business? Seeing none. Is there a motion to recess into executive session?
So Lou.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there a motion to return from executive session?
So move.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion on item twenty-eight?
Yes, Commissioners, I will move to approve the report claim settlement of eighty-one twenty-three dot zero cents.
Perfect. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Stay tuned real quick, and we'll hit PBA, and everybody can return to business. Oh, yeah, we need a motion to adjourn. Well, actually, I'll, seeing the business of the people conducted, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Sorry.
I'm in.
I'm in as well. Commissioner Low, let us know when you get in.
I know we had one in a hotel around I-35 back in seventies or something that most of First Southern Church went to eat after church on Sundays.
All right. Commissioner Low is now in. We'll call this meeting to order. All three members present. Notice that the meeting was properly posted July 29, 2025. First item of the business is approval of amendments. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number two is the claims. Is there a motion to approve claims?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number three is report of fees. Is there a motion to approve the report of fees?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Same thing for the PBA, report of fees. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number five is a lease for the election board parking lot.
No.
I'm sorry.
It's the allowed use of the election board parking lot for the infant crisis for the day, and they provided us with a letter.
So move.
Uh, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number six is payment authorization of PBA 2024 bonds. Is there a motion to approve payment? Two super roofs.
Two super roofs, that's right. Again, they did a great job for us. This is actually the retainage that we hold back on construction contracts for non-performance purposes. They did a great job, and this is funding due now.
Good to hear, thank you. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number seven?
Item number seven is progressive payment to Lingo Construction Services in the amount of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and two and nine.
This is on ICB. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item citizen participation. I don't have anybody signed up. Board comments, anyone? New business, seeing none. I declare this meeting adjourned, seeing as the business is conducted.